Good evening, I'd like to call the September 5th, 2023 meeting of the Hamilton Board of Select into order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can anybody hear us? Just nod, thumbs up? Thumbs up, I think it's okay, thank you.
I saw a nod.
I saw a nod and a thumbs up, so I think that speaks to both. We are meeting in the Town Hall Auditorium. We are recording the meeting, we're also broadcasting over the Zoom. Is there anybody else recording the meeting? Seeing none, moving on.
What did I say?
All right, so the first order of business is minutes.
And we don't have to.
The second order of business. So Pam, will they be done before you leave?
I know, we're very hard.
She's here till the end of the month, so.
That's a good point, I forgot about that. Right. Can't leave without doing every one of your minutes.
Exactly.
Right. Why she didn't do them. All right, our first order of business is the Health Director, Finn McCool, and he's bringing up a problem existing since the 1800s.
Yeah.
Seventeen hundreds, maybe.
Yeah.
Beaver ponds.
Yeah, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, first off, how did you do?
Um, we did the place, but we played very well, so I was happy about it.
Well, I mean, must've been pretty good competition.
Yeah, it was very difficult.
It was a really good trip.
It was an excellent trip, yeah. There's 23 other bands in our division, so it was, you know, tough competition, but we'll be back next year, so.
Okay, do you have any samples to provide for us, or?
Samples.
B C D. YouTube.
It is out there, yeah, it is out there, I don't have them on me, though.
Do you actually have a channel?
Um, yeah, Facebook channel, yeah, I'll have to share it.
A little bit out of the loop, what are we talking about?
Remember he was away, he went to Scotland for a tournament.
Bagpipe.
Bagpipe.
Bagpipe, okay.
Now, you do the drums?
Yeah, I'm the snare drummer, my older brother's the bagpiper, my little brother's the tenor drummer, and we play in the same band, so.
Okay.
Family affairs, so, yeah.
Did you take your mom?
Yeah, my parents went, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Great, well, congrats, must've been a good trip, and next year, you'll be next year. It's like the Red Sox, they're all.
Exactly.
All right, so, uh, welcome back, as you know, we've had an ongoing issue with beaver ponds in town.
Yeah.
You know more than us, give us a little oversight.
So the, the main one that I was here to talk about tonight is on, off of Carmody Road, off the Scantic River back there. It's definitely a beaver issue, I went out there with the property owner, we went and looked, it's clearly backed up by some beaver dams. My concern is that it's backed up so much, it's encroaching onto the properties on Carmody Road, starting at 37 and moving down, with their septic systems being right behind their house, too, where that that could flood out their septic systems, possibly hurt them or destroy them.
Just on the east side of Carmody?
Yeah, if you're driving south, so that would be, yeah, on the left side, yep. And then, of course, there's been several complaints of, you know, excessive water in basements of the properties on that street, likely due to the, that backup of that high, high water. If you just drive down the road and you just, you can see it from the road, it's coming up right to the street almost.
I drove down there and before you got to Whitcups, for instance, on the left-hand side, it's like this dirty brown coming right up to the road.
Yeah.
Before Old Orchard, you know, there's that.
That's it, yeah, and it goes way back, and it's, I mean, I don't know how much water it is, if I had to estimate, it had to be hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that are, that's backed up there.
And typically, normally, this would have been released through the culvert.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so that culvert is completely backed up, it's flooding over it, but it's still backing up a ton.
Is the culvert blocked, too?
Yeah, that's what it looks like. You'd have to get like an actual beaver trapper to, or someone that specializes in it, to decide where these, where the dams are.
Yeah.
There's a couple of recommendations I'd make. The first one would be hiring a beaver trapper, which is also the cheapest option. Usually that needs to be done every year, every two years. The second option would be.
Because they come back?
Yeah, they come back, and beavers can reproduce, I forget exactly, what is this, like, four or five times a year?
We did that before, and this may be one of the other places, on East Long Meadow Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we had that trap there about the Paulus, so Grand Prix Farm.
Yep, um, so that's one way to, you know, solve the issue, or at least begin to solve it. The second one would be to also, I would say at the same time, we should, there should be a beaver, they call it beaver deceiver, installed to allow the water to go through, and the beavers can't block it up, and it usually takes maybe an hour, a year of maintenance to keep it up, to make sure it's functioning properly.
How does that work?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, how they not be able to?
There's, there's several different types, but, um, I've seen them installed in some of the other towns I've worked for, and they seem to work really well. It's just like this type of cage they put up further from the culvert, with the pipe leading to the culvert, and they don't tend to go up and dam up that open to area. And there's, there's a couple other, you know, types of deceivers that can be used.
Now, we've had complaints from some of the butters on the west side of Carmody, extending down that side street, that they're worried that this is also affecting their septic, et cetera. It seems like you're saying the east side is the real problem, would you anticipate this would be a problem three or four hundred feet to the west?
It's, it's hard to say when it comes to the groundwater, with that huge rise in elevation of that water just across the street, it will start to raise the groundwater across, across that whole area. My main concern right now would be the east side, though, because that water's literally coming right up to their septic.
A little toxic, too.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Average, what are you saying, like the 40 to 60 block of Carmody?
From like 30, I think the first house is 37, and like those three houses, or four houses there, and then, um, I have a map here.
I'm looking at the Google Maps right now.
Yeah, so, yeah, 37, and then the next three.
So my question is, the Scantic, it's coming off the Scantic.
So you can see that, like, there's the, it's like a, I don't know what you'd call exactly, like a floodplain kind of tributary that leads to the Scantic River, that go, that's right behind the house, that's what's blocked up, and turning this into a huge floodplain.
Are you, can you make Craig a co-host, and he can share that on the screen?
Sure. I'm not zoomed in right now, I can just, I can pull it up.
Yeah.
So, trapping, is there, is there a, do we have to talk to Fisheries and Wildlife, Conservation?
Yeah, I would definitely.
The Adams?
Yeah, I'd definitely at least be in conversation with Conservation.
You gotta admit me?
So the Board of Health can issue an emergency beaver trapping permit for 10 days without going through mass fisheries.
Yeah.
Then, if the problem isn't solved in 10 days, we can give an extension for another 10 days under the emergency permit, and if it's still not resolved after those 20 days, they automatically have to go to the state to get a 30-day extension.
Where, where do they take them? The beavers, what do they trap?
Usually they're, usually they're killed, but, um, there are humane ways, there, there are companies, it's more expensive, that trap them, and, um, I'm not sure where they take them, but, so they say it's a.
But I thought there was the question that we can't go into private property, because we have that declaration.
So, I would need to get, we'd need to get permission from the property owner firstly, and I think he'd be willing to let us onto his property. I've been talking to him, and since it's become an emergency health issue, the town can step forward.
Okay, that's kind of my question, at what point are we?
Yeah, it's becoming a health incident for those.
We will pay for the trapping, as a town.
Yeah.
Not the homeowner?
Yeah, yeah.
In the discussion with Town Council today, if the Board of Health declares a threat to human safety and health, the town can step forward, can go forward, usually even the law says in Massachusetts, you can't spend taxpayers' dollars on private property. This will enable the town, if it chooses, to spend some taxpayers' dollars or other funds that you might have, to, to deal with the beaver problem, either by trapping or, you know, the other methods of beaver deceivers and so.
Not, not that we also don't want to be working with the neighbor, but without, also negate the requirement that the homeowner agrees? If we declare an emergency?
Yes, and, and there's, in the statute, there's a list of, there's a list of problems that enable the Board of Health to make the declaration, including a threat to essential municipal facilities, to the, to the stormwater system and so forth.
Well, but I agree, but okay, say Mr. Jones said, okay, that's all good, but I still don't want you taking care of it. We can still go ahead and do it?
You can.
Because you've declared an emergency, okay, that's my question.
This lady had a question.
Can you make me co-host? Make me co-host, so I can pull up the map, because I have a question I want to ask Finn as well.
Okay.
In a while, I forget where to do it.
I think you just click on my name. Get one more arrow over.
How many years, Jones, three years?
Are you?
Yeah, you gotta go one more arrow over.
It looks like you're not in.
Yeah, right there, and then click on the three dots. It says asshole mute the next to that.
Make me co-host.
Yeah, okay, make me co-host. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Finn, over here, the Scantic River's coming down, makes a 90-degree left turn to go down, parallel to Carmody.
Yep.
Is this the area here?
Yep, that whole area is basically flooded completely, yeah, from behind the houses. I haven't actually gone down there, but I, it must be pretty close, because that 37 on Carmody Road is that first house.
Right here.
Right here, and that water is behind his house, so I think the elevation goes up higher, over by River, uh, River Park.
Yeah.
But, um, starting from 37, even back up further.
Up this way?
Yeah, there's water from there, all the way down, all the way across the entire area.
Okay.
I would not be surprised, because River Park, and you recall this, when we had the flood in '05, those homes were underwater.
Yeah.
And we had to, we actually had to rescue them with the loader.
Wow.
To go in, so.
They could be having an issue, too.
Don Noren's house, he had the problem, flooding quite a bit, and George Stone at the end, right?
George Stone at the end, yeah.
How many homes in total, you say, are affected, you know, potential septic and?
I would say all the houses on the east, um, east side of.
This whole stretch all up and down?
Yeah, yeah.
Away, true.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, so it crosses at the culvert, and that's at the bottom there, below that house?
The culvert is, um.
Can you pull it up?
I don't, I don't know where you're asking, I'm sorry.
Okay, so further down Carmody. Right, so where does, uh?
The culvert, if you go almost where your house is, if you go up a little, right there, basically.
There it is.
Yeah.
So it crosses behind the house on Old Orchard?
I believe that's just about the area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Very long culvert. All right, so you're saying, gosh, that's pretty, pretty good acreage covered by a backup.
A water, so that needs to be definitely done with Conservation, I think, in mind, too, just because to release that water afterwards has to be done in a very controlled, very controlled way.
Well, is it controlled by basically the size of the culvert going, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, depending, if, you'd have to, it's really hard, I should have brought some pictures, but it, it's, um, the water's already coming over the top, so if you just pull out that beaver dam, the amount of water rushing, potentially.
And it potentially log again.
Yeah, exactly. And there's, there's a company that I've used before in the, in another town, they're called Beaver Solutions. They have, they come out, they can do a site assessment and give you a long-term solution to it, instead of having to go out and trap every year, every other year. They'll come out, do the site assessment, decide how many, how many dams are there, um, does it need to be trapped, can we just install a, um, a deceiver, um, help with the trapping? But I've always been in favor of the more long-term solution than just trying to fix it real quick, no.
Do you have a sense of how much can, how much were?
Yeah, so.
Twenty-six, wasn't it?
Sorry?
The estimate that they sent around was like.
Yeah, so.
Twenty-six hundred.
Oh, okay.
So it's first, the site assessment, which isn't required, it's $275, I think that's reasonable. But then typical deceivers are $1,600 to $2,600, and trapping can be anywhere from like $300 up to like $1,800, depending on how many dams and beavers there, how long they're there.
How was this done between basically the shared health services and the local Board of Health? That is, are you, if the board voted this, would you be the administrator of this, but working with the local Board of Health per se?
Exactly, yeah.
Those would come to us?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My other question, and it hasn't been brought up yet, is standing water, mosquitoes.
That's another, that's another issue, too.
West Nile, potential safety issue.
Yeah, it becomes a nuisance, and, um, yeah, especially with a positive case recently, so, um, with all that standing water, it becomes, that's why it's a health emergency, and we can declare it a health emergency.
Reasons to be a health emergency, we have septic.
Yep, standing water wells, um, catch basins.
Catch patients.
Yeah, mosquitoes.
Before we do a motion for you, Mark had told us there were four to five locations in town with beaver dams. This is obviously the most severe.
I would say so.
But he mentioned, I think, up by, uh, by Glendale Estates.
Yep, that's already being worked on right now, so that's hopefully.
Worked on, so you were able to release?
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I forget his name, Highway Department.
Arden Langau, yeah.
He's been on top of it, getting it.
So he's able to work with the landowner there?
That one, I don't think is actually on private property, they just needed access to the town property, so they needed permission from.
To cross.
Property owners to get on, and they gave that to him to get back there.
And the other ones, I mean, I, again, East Long Meadow Road used to be a, past.
Yep.
I haven't seen it a problem, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we can beat this to death, or Craig, would you like us to offer a motion to declare an emergency?
I think we need to.
Okay.
There is a question over there, I don't think we want to.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Linda Moriarty, I live on the corner of Old Orchard and Carmody Road. Patty also lives on Carmody Road, and we live on the west side. Our stump pumps have been going like crazy, Patty's got two intercellar going very often, you know, we both lived on Carmody Road in that area for a long time, and this has never happened before, okay, so the beavers are a huge issue. But also, there used to be a stream running in the middle of the field that drains the water. I heard that a culvert is in that stream and has been, there's lots of rumors, has been kind of squished, and a tritus is blocking everything. Now, behind me is also wetlands, where there is another culvert, south of Old Orchard Road, just a tad. The drains from the field into the property behind me, which is owned by the Alstons. All that is stagnant, full of mosquitoes, scum, it's awful, and, um, you know, I, I think dredging needs to be done, you know, eventually, to some parts of it, so that stream can reestablish itself, and it just naturally drains the field, I mean, it's always been like that. So, um, I guess that's what I have to say, I, I live in fear that my stump pump's gonna burn out, and my cellar's gonna be full of water. So I appreciate everyone trying to address this and solve this, and I really hope that it will be pretty soon.
Do you really think it's a beaver, all of that, because I, I went over there and I didn't see anything, and all the, all the story, all their dams.
Yeah, it seems to be a beaver issue, but that's, again, we'd have to get an expert out there to really say something.
Combination of the very wet year we've had, a lot of rainfall, and a short amount of time, and then the beavers, if there are dams there, and it's just gonna back up, and groundwater level, everything. So, I mean, if, even if there's, if she's saying there's no beavers there now, there's evidence that they were there.
There, there are definitely beavers there, it's, I can't say for sure that that's the exact reason why it's blocked up.
I think we just need to raise that pipe and put that deceiver over it.
Yeah.
And get that cleaned up, because it was never overgrown like that, there was an arm over there, so it was always clear. Since it's overgrown and just not maintained, I think that's the problem.
I think there needs to be some clarity towards, you know, what rights we have in terms of an easement to do work for that, and that some of these are easements that, Linda, you know, in the past, may have just been like a handshake agreement, and now we need to codify them and make sure we have the rights to go in and do something.
I mean, right next to me, and across the street is, are the DeBonnie families, I know they're having trouble, and the lady next to me is having trouble down, uh, Old Orchard, and across the street from her, a family's, but she, I talked to this lady, the Donahue's, the other day, and she's got two or three stump pumps and has water down. So it's, it's not just, I just wanted to say, it's not just the ease right on top of the thing, it's, it's also affecting some other people.
Well, I know Joe Cruzell stopped into our office, and he's more around the corner as well, for sure.
He's also tuned in today.
Okay, good, hi, Joe.
And there's, uh, John, who has his hand up.
Hi, John.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, just, just to piggyback off of what Mrs. Moriarty, uh, who's my mother, was saying, um, so I don't live in the area, but I'm very familiar with it, I grew up in this neighborhood, and the area that Linda was referring to, south of Five Old Orchard Road, yes, that is correct, it's on the west side of Carmody, and there's a culvert that runs, um, east-west underneath Carmody, which flows into Mr. Morton's property. Now, the beaver dams have stopped the flow of water, uh, in the stream that runs parallel to Carmody, which is the subject of the discussion tonight. So there's multiple beaver dams, from, from what I could tell, um, south of Old Orchard Road, um, going through that stream. So the, the wet area behind Five Old Orchard Road on the west side of Carmody, there's nowhere for that water to go, so it's just, it's stagnant back there, and typically, during this time of year, you know, for decades, it's just completely dry back there, uh, that is not the case, um, this year, because of the, the issue that we have before the board today. And just on a side note, um, you know, here in the Commonwealth, there is no vehicle to relocate beavers, the beavers, you know, once they're trapped, they're euthanized, and, you know, the order of, um, as, as far as the volume of water in there, um, yeah, I would respectfully correct the town's representative, Mr. McCool, uh, it's in the order of millions of gallons, not hundreds, thousands of gallons. That, that whole area in Mr. Morton's field is underwater at this point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John.
Just for clarification, you said, I'm not too familiar with that area in, in full, but there's a stream that comes off the Scantic that runs somewhere over towards Old Orchard, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, Mr. Revest, it's, um, you can kind of see it on the map there, if you just go to, to the immediate right of the word Carmody Road, you can see it. That runs parallel to the Scantic River and drains, uh, wetland, it flows north to south, it, it drains wetlands that are on the north side of East Long Meadow Road. And the culvert in question that I mentioned, uh, on the west side of Carmody, flows east-west into that north-south flowing stream, and it continues down, um, behind, uh, 71, 77 Carmody, and rejoins the Scantic, um, in the corner of Mr. Whitcups Field, um, yeah, you can see by that, by, right, just, just north of that oxbow, it rejoins the Scantic River.
I, I can kind of see what you're talking, like, the, the, could you pull the trails coming through?
Yeah, the, the town's, uh, G I S map, uh, gives a clearer picture of the resource areas that exist back there, including the streams, wetlands, and Scantic River.
So the culvert behind Linda is actually taking the water west to east, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah. The culvert behind, Linda?
Yes.
The culvert behind you is taking the water west to east, correct? It's bringing your water over to the Scantic?
There was always an ebb and flow, when there was a lot of rain or anything like that, it would come to the field, which I guess is east, flow under and go west behind my house.
Right.
And then it would slowly, you know, as, as the water drained.
So more like, so you were kind of like flood storage, but then it would go away, released back to the river.
Yeah, flowing from west to east, and east back to west.
Sure, okay.
No, east to west, yeah, and west.
Yes.
Back and forth.
Okay.
Back and forth.
The key part here is giving you the authority to do something.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And this is the most severe case you have here.
Yeah.
At that point, all right.
That I've.
And this is something, uh, does the board feel an issue with funding per se, I think we have enough vehicles, we can find something, take care of.
Make that bigger on our side. The G I S side, yeah, just expand that, top right. You can kind of see what he's talking about here, with the water flow, but then you have all the little fingers that come off, you know, I'm assuming the culvert here, between this parcel here, from the orchard.
Yep. A little finger string right there.
Yeah, all these little strings are all fed off of probably this whole pooling area here.
So if we hire, if we hire a company like Beaver Solutions to assess it, should we hire them to also take a look behind Old Orchard there?
But it's not, it sounds more like there's no way for that water to release back because of the blocking. You know, that sounds more like a, once we clear out that.
If we clear out the, the blockage here, and this, this, you know, this giant area in yellow here, proceeds, it's, it's gonna pull the water back with it, in theory, but.
But I think we should direct.
Keep in mind that.
Direct the Highway Superintendent to look at the culverts, by what condition they're in, right.
That's, I guess that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, right, two separate, there's two-tier things. So Craig, would you like a motion to declare a health emergency for the purpose of addressing the beaver pond, uh, to the east of Carmody?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All there.
Hi. So, and, um, I guess we would direct the Board of Health Department to be in coordination with the shared health services to get this done, and any, any financial issues, work with Bob.
And we'd, uh, direct the Highway Superintendent to look at those culverts.
I think we can reach out the mark on that, yeah.
Okay.
Which he probably won't be able to look until the water goes through. He's like, I'm not driving, I'm not diving in there, no.
Let me know what you need.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Couldn't pay me to go down and look at them.
All right, thanks, guys.
You're gonna hire that firm to come out and do the analysis for what to learn?
Yeah.
Whatever.
That's the best way.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know it's early, how's the budget this year?
Better. All right.
Well, we'll see once we get the bills from Scotland.
Oh, really, yeah. Send us the links out, seriously.
I will, I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down here. All right, so next. Next we're gonna talk about, um, a charging station and municipal aggregation. Not that we aren't aggravated already, but.
Bridge.
Aggravation, aggravation.
Yes, yeah, stop, so.
We have a number of them.
Did we, did we ignore you, or? Did we ignore you, or?
No, 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 I was with them, I was waiting down there, I thought the meeting was down there, I'd been sitting down there.
Yeah, we do that a lot.
We told, they told us to leave you down.
John, you will be cleaning fish next year at the fishing derby forever.
All right, thank you. So.
Okay.
Hi, Ed. All right, so Bob, this is.
Is on, she was going to do the presentation.
And, okay.
Have we lost a few people? Who are we looking for? Joanne's logging back in right now.
Enjoy it, yeah.
So you're gonna make her co-host, so she can share her screen if she needs to, yes.
I'm not.
Actually, you're co-host, you could do it, right?
I guess I could, that'd be a good call. She's in twice.
What a poor sound.
Is Joanne going to do this, or Najani?
I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Both, all right.
Yes, yeah.
All right, sorry about that. So I'm gonna do a, well, not really a presentation, I'm just gonna talk. Bob, did you want us to start with the aggregation?
Uh, yeah, start with aggregation, please.
Okay, um, so essentially, let me share my screen.
Does she want to share her screen?
Can I do that?
What are we using for speakers now, Bob, the speaker from the TV, or?
That's your microphone.
Is the mic, is the problem?
Say what?
All right.
Okay, can you hear me?
We're not getting good audio.
Yeah, your mic's a little muted.
Okay.
I'll call it, let you see.
I can't turn that up, I, our computers just really hate me. Is that better?
No.
No. No.
All right, we'll try to listen in.
All right, we'll be attentive. Kind of.
I guess I can't dial in and use the audio.
I don't think that's on our side.
No, it's probably ours.
Is she muted?
Yes. Now she's muted.
Perhaps we should try another day.
I'm in Marley, we get more.
I think she's trying to connect via her phone. She's trying to connect because she's having some microphone situation right now. I hope, yes, let's give her a couple of seconds, minutes, see. Sorry about that.
That's a lot of freaking water, a million gallons.
Oh, yeah. I was surprised about that number.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's better now.
Well, all right, so I dialed in on my phone, sorry about that. Now it sounds, now it sounds super loud.
You can feed back, you can feed back to her.
Okay, so my apologies. Like I said, I don't know what happens, but the grid doesn't like the zoom apparently. I was receiving audio and visual sign until it was my turn to talk, so. Okay, so Bob, we had that with Bob a couple of weeks ago to talk about municipal aggregation. And basically what that is, is when municipalities get together to go as a combined group to get supply pricing for electricity. So to back it up a little bit, for those who aren't aware, there are two components to the electric bill. There is the supply portion, which is the generation, and then there's the distribution portion, which is the national grid portion. So if you don't go out to bid to the market on your own to get supply pricing, National Grid will do that on your behalf, and we call that the basic service rate. Essentially, what we do is we take all of the load that we anticipate having that didn't get their own supplier, and we submit that to the market. The market comes back with a price, and that is the price that everyone pays who does not have their own supplier. So last winter, when we did that, because of the volatility in the market, the prices went up to 34 cents a kilowatt hour for electricity on the supply side, which was significant. You know, municipal aggregation can help to bring those spikes down a little bit if you sign a contract with a supplier. So there are a number of towns who do this throughout Massachusetts. I live in Williamstown. Williamstown has enjoyed a municipal aggregation for several years. And our aggregation contract, the last one that they had was a three-year contract that they had signed up with. And last winter, we were paying 10 cents for supply, whereas customers who didn't have any aggregation or didn't have their own supplier were paying 34 cents. So there are some definite benefits to aggregation. It's not a process that National Grid gets involved in. It's something that the town would have to do on their own. There's a nice website right here on mass.gov that I can send to Bob that kind of gives a how-to. Essentially, you have to apply to the Department of Public Utilities. And once they approve that application, you're free to go out and work with suppliers to get the best price possible for the town. Any questions on that before I continue?
That's for everyone in town?
Yeah, so essentially, the way municipal aggregation works is you get a price and you get it for all of the town. All of the residence towers, except the commercial buildings, I'm sorry, it's just for residential customers. But essentially, if folks don't want to participate in the aggregation, or if they want to find their own supplier, they can do an opt-out. And I'll show you the Williamstown page where, right here, you can see they set up, you know, all of the information. They tell us, you know, what's going on, how much the price is per kilowatt hour, you know, where we're getting our renewable energy, and you know, more information if you want it, and then you can opt-in or opt-out. When they first made this contract, I also received a mailing in my mailbox that said, this is what's taking place. The town is buying power on your behalf. And you could opt-out, you know, buy a paper copy as well if you didn't have the availability of going to a website to do that. So the negative for the aggregation was that it was taking the department a very long time to approve the applications for aggregation. They've recently gotten a little bit of hot water over that. The governor stepped in and they've set up the process. So my understanding is it only takes a couple of months for that approval to join the aggregation as opposed to, I mean, there are some towns out there who've been waiting years.
What's the opt-in, opt-out timeline? Is that any time or is it only specific?
It's specific to when the contract starts.
Well, you have like a month to opt-out or?
Yeah, so essentially, you have to, I believe you have to go to a town meeting in order to get this ratified and approved for the town. And then whatever, whoever you contract with, like Williamstown has contracted with Colonial Power, which is the biggest municipal aggregator. And then there's a deadline. It's usually 30 days, right? So the mailer will go out and they will say you have until X day to opt-out. If you don't opt-out by then, you're assumed to opt-in.
And that goes to every resident, the mailer?
It does. Yep. Anybody who has an electric account with National Grid, yeah.
All right, so I'll ask the dumb question, I guess. If you're saying you're dropping a charge from 34 cents down to, say it's 10, 12 cents, why would someone want to opt-out?
Yeah, so there are some folks who have contracted with their own supplier. So they may now want to participate because they may feel that they've already gotten a better deal with who they've contracted with. And then there's some folks, John.
You would override existing contracts that people have?
You would not.
No, you would.
No, we would not, no.
So they wouldn't have to opt-out then? They already have a contract?
No, no. Right. Anybody who has a contract in place with a supplier would not be part of the municipal aggregation. They would not get the notice to be participants.
Okay.
Is there any chance, and this might be a dumb question too, but is there any chance that the aggregate price would go higher than the national price of the grid?
So it depends. You know, it happened in the last couple of years, but keep in mind, we go out for basic pricing on behalf of customers who don't have a supplier twice a year, right? So last winter, it was very high. The summer before, it was low. So, you know, the aggregation price was a little bit higher than our price two summers ago. But when you average it over the 12 months, it was still cheaper to do the aggregation.
So the short answer is no.
Right.
And is there a window? Like, how often could people opt-in and opt-out? So I know some people sign a six-month contract with their suppliers, or sometimes they do it two-year, one-year. What's that timeframe look like?
So again, once the notice goes out, there's typically a 30-day notice period saying you must return the opt-out by X day. And that's usually the period, right? If you don't return anything, you're assumed to opt-in. If, because the state really wants to make sure that residential customers are not harmed, they do allow them to opt-out, you know, when they want to, in essence. Yeah, but the resident has not signed this contract. The town has signed the contract to provide it on behalf of the resident. So you're still, your account is still your account.
All right, so we're, but I mean, the billing is still going directly to the resident?
Yes. So typically what happens is, so you get a bill today, you'll see National Grid Distribution on page one, and on page two, you'll see National Grid Basic Service. All that would change is on page two, you'd see Colonial Power Group or whoever you contracted with.
So again, I'm going to go back to my opt-in, opt-out question. A resident gets the opt-in, opt-out notice. They continue to, you know, status quo, opt-in, however it works. A year later, they say, oh, this is starting to become not something I want anymore. Can they opt-out?
The resident can opt-out, the town cannot opt-out because you've signed a contract.
Okay. And what's the length of the contract?
That is up to the town.
Okay, so it's a negotiation?
Right, that's a negotiation. I know some municipalities last year, their contracts for aggregation ran out in November, just when the prices were highest. So they elected to do a short, some elected to do a very short-term contract of, you know, six months, and then go back out to bid, you know, in the spring and when the prices came down a little bit. So that is really between you and whoever you're contracting with as a supplier.
It's probably different there as a supplier, right?
No.
So.
So which, okay, so which charge on my bill is the one we're talking about here?
So on page two, John?
Yep.
If you, if you look at where it says basic service.
Right, basic service fixed, and I'm at 14 cents.
Right, so it went down, so again, we go out twice a year. So the winter period was from November 1st to April 30th. And then the summer period is from May 1st to October 31st. So it's 34 cents over the winter, and then it came down in the summer to 14. And then we don't know what the price is going to be this coming November 1st, because that's when it's going to change again and the winter rates will go into effect.
So if it's under the aggregation, does it stay the same for the whole year?
It does. It does. So again, you know, living here in Williamstown, I paid this 10.671 cents the entire 12 months last year.
So this would require town meeting action to approve this?
Yes.
Okay, and then does it go to the state for them, like Department of Utilities, or is it?
No, so you would have to go to the state first, John, and apply, and then they would approve you as an entity that can enter the aggregation contract. And then you would do your negotiations, and then you would take that to town meeting to approve, once you have a contract price.
Okay, so you're saying we go to the state saying, okay, we're interested in going out to marketplace looking for aggregation prices? And you can do it. Now, say the town does that, we don't find a good one, are we obligated to do that? Even though we were told the state we were going to do it?
Uh, no, no, not until, you don't have to, until you sign anything, you're not on the hook. At this point, you're just fact-finding and you're, you know, you're looking to see what's available.
Okay, so there's no downside in telling the state, hey, we're going out to look?
Right. And like I said, again, the approval process from the state can take a few months. So even if you, you think you may, you know, you're on the fence, you may want to submit the application and get it approved so that if you decide that you want to take part, it's available and ready for you to do that.
At a town meeting.
I think she said it backwards. She said we have to sign a contract and then go for approval through the town. I think we'd have to do it.
No, you want your town approval before you sign anything.
As she said.
Right, but I mean, we need permission from the state first.
Yes, that's the process. So if you click on this, it'll, it'll tell you. Oh, I'm sorry, let me, I got this backwards. You have to do the town meeting first. And then you go to the DPU, sorry. It's been a while since I've done this. And then you go back to the DPU at the end with your contract.
Okay.
So here are all the, here are all the towns in Massachusetts who have participated in aggregation already. Your area in Hampton hasn't really taken, so I can't really suggest a nearby town that you could talk to to see how they did the process. But there, again, you know, Bob, you know, if you know the Williamstown folks, the North Hampton folks have done it. You know, there's a lot of folks in the Worcester area who have done it. We can certainly connect you with some folks.
We can explore this further. I would say that of the towns that I'm familiar with, none have adopted municipal aggregation, abandoned it.
Right. I'm just trying to get a sense of the flow of it. Because we have a town meeting coming up, is this something we need to bring an article to the fall town meeting for permission to go ahead? But we can't until we have a price to present to the town meeting, is that what we're saying, or?
We ought to have some idea of
Well, so
You got to convince them.
Spring would be more likely.
Are we asking the town for permission to explore or permission to enter into a contract? Without, you can't do it without specifics of the contract? Okay, then you're stuck with the spring, right?
I think we would want to have a bid or two.
Yeah.
So that people can compare a proposed price. Proposed price to their curly pay.
I agree with that. It just would be nice if there was a chance getting it done before the high price of the winter, oh, well, yeah. I mean, I'm anticipating mine to go up, so. Some of us don't have the solar Tesla field.
I haven't had an electric bill in months.
Yeah, 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 we got a lease. All right.
She also has a presentation on EVs, EV charging.
Okay, I think that, Ed, is that your question, EVs or aggregate?
I've been following the North Hampton Cambers Pelham Community Choice Aggregation.
Hey, come up closer, I'm not sure about how we're picking up.
I'm just saying, as Lady mentioned, I've been following
Ed Lamro.
Hampton Cambers Pelham Community Choice Aggregation. And for going to town meeting, what they normally do for a couple of towns, you get, you need a consultant involved here. And so that's, you need a partner on this to help your shepherd through it. It's not something you do on your own. And I would highly advise looking, and I'll send you the link to a YouTube video of the meeting where this was kind of rolled out to the community. Very good presentation by the consultant, all the town, the three towns go into it. And with what you learned here today, I think it'll make a fuller picture in your mind. So I'm going to email you that link.
Okay.
If you're interested in it, definitely.
Look out for us.
Ed, thank you. And Ed's got a pretty good background with utilities, so he knows what he's talking about. We had a presentation several years back from the Hampshire Council of Governments, I believe. Ken?
Now out of business.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But they were trying to push that, that had to be, gosh, eight, 10 years ago, Pam, right? Ken Elstein, yeah.
Is this something that we could put on the fall town meeting, just for an exploration thing, without going into specifics?
That's not a bad idea, you know, just to say for discussion only, let's tell people what's coming up.
I would just advise contacting a consultant to have that discussion first.
Okay.
To be a lot more educated.
You know what, Don, maybe we need a committee to talk about this, and I think I know somebody who could chair that committee.
Is he wearing a green shirt?
Well, I can't Well, I can't say, I'm colorblind, but yeah, it could be. Would you be willing to help us with this, Ed?
I'll help, I'll sure. I'll help you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
But I'm still thinking spring.
No, I agree, but I think, you know, we gotta jump on it now, right?
Yeah, we don't think we'd get a full approval until spring, if we have any contract.
Okay. All right, let's talk EV.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. All right. I just wanna make sure again, 'cause the computers. So essentially, we, we talked about, talked about a whole bunch of things, and we took up a bunch of Bob's time, but it was all good things for the town. So National Grid has a number of energy efficiency initiatives that we are enhancing this year, because we are in the process of evaluating our infrastructure throughout the grid. So we talked about, to Bob about what we call the ESMP, which is the Electric Sector Modernization Plan. Um, and in that plan, we had to outline to the department the steps that we are taking as a utility to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our customers, not just today, but five, 10, 30 years down the road. Um, and there are a number of initiatives on how to do this, including building substations and enhancing substations that we have to add more feeder positions. You know, things that just really make the systems robust, so that not only can we export power out of those substations, but we can take in the solar and everything that's being built throughout the state, right? So when our infrastructure was built, it was built many years ago, and was only built to, you know, send power out. It really wasn't built to take power in. So with the advent of all of the solar that's taking place in the state, we're finding that our facilities are really overtasked, and they're not able to accept or, you know, generate any, or put out any more power. One of the ways that we're hoping to offset some of the cost in this is that we're hoping to enhance the electrification process that a lot of folks are undergoing, and that includes heat pumps, that includes electric vehicles. There are a number of other measures that we're taking out there to say, okay, how, if we can make the system more efficient, that is less that we have to build, and it's, it's cheaper to make the system more efficient than it is to build a new substation, right? We're talking millions of dollars to build substations. So what we have done in the EV charging station program is we've enhanced our incentives to be higher than they were last year, but we've also built in some infrastructure components to help you do, um, infrastructure improvements, whether it be to your house or to your municipal parking lot, or wherever that may be. So right now is a perfect time, if you're considering EV charging stations for the town, you may want to take a look at adding them now while these incentives are so generous.
I, I haven't seen an incentive program as generous as the one that was just announced, where the town would get a subsidy of $140,000. And where the town's share, or local, local match, would be in the range of 24,000, and we have a grant of 9,000, and so it would bring it down to around 15. And what we've discussed is a so-called Level 3 DC charging system. Uh, the difference is, the DC chargers will charge a typical battery for 300 miles in 20 to 30 minutes, uh, which I think is practical, versus Level 2s, which are the kind that work best in your garage overnight, which takes six to seven hours. And they say Level 1 is just house current, that'd take a couple days. And so there are lots of Level 2s in the region already. I think the last I looked, it was over 300. But does a town actually want to put in a charging station where somebody would roll up and monopolize it for six or seven hours? I mean, that's, that doesn't make sense for charging, uh, of the public, for the public. The DC 3, uh, the Level 3s seem to make the most sense. And the way it works in, in all instances is that the town will pay for whatever they, the cost of electricity is, and they will, uh, set a price for the charging station above what they pay, so that some kind of modest profit, or big profit for that, if you wanted to do that, although I think that would diminish the number of people who would use it. But you would make some kind of modest profit, which could then be used as revenue by the town, for some special purpose. We were gonna go over to the senior center, I would suggest that we use it for some senior project. And also, it, it would keep a cushion for any kind of maintenance that might be required.
What are the, the goals in installing electric chargers?
The goal would be to accommodate the public, especially the local residents, to buy electric vehicles.
What about the strain on the grid?
Well, I think that's what, uh, that's what Joanne was talking about. There will be a strain, and, and I actually read an article over the weekend in one of the Loaf papers, uh, basically about what she's just talked about, that National Grid is undertaking a program to upgrade their infrastructure, to accommodate what seems to be, uh, an increase in demand for electricity. A lot of, not just vehicles, but other, other uses of electricity that we have.
Where is that electricity coming? My concern is Massachusetts relies strictly on natural gas. 76% of its power comes from natural gas, the power of the electric grid. Installing chargers is putting more demand on. Is it really a green alternative? Because.
Massachusetts is making as much progress as any state, perhaps except in California, in so-called green infrastructure, in solar and in wind. And so.
We've seen, we've seen what happens with wind, it doesn't always blow.
So part of the, if I could, Bob, um, part of the ESMP, part of that plan is to move away from fossil fuels, right? It's to get away from natural gas as being the main source of fuel to generate electricity in New England. It's bringing, it's on, it's bringing on geothermal, it's bringing on more windmills, it's bringing on solar, it's bringing on all of the other methods of, you know, generation hydrogen, right? We're looking at hydrogen, we have pilots in the eastern part of the state where we have geothermal systems that we put in, and we've also got hydrogen that we put in, um, which there isn't a shortage of hydrogen, right? Well, there's, it's hard to come by right now, but once everything gets built out to accommodate it, there's a shortage of hydrogen. So there, there, that is part of all of this grid build-out. So right now, I can tell you, like, in Hampton, we, you know, we just redid the Hampton Substation. I don't know, Jim, was it like 10 years ago? It seems like forever. You know, so there's capacity up in Hampton Substation where we could accommodate these EV chargers that you're suggesting for the town. There are towns that we may not be able to do that, because we are full at capacity. But in Hampton, we can do it. And the benefits of that, again, as Bob had mentioned, was allowing folks to come through the town who may have, um, you know, want to stop by, if they can charge, they can have lunch, they can go, you know, visit the, the library, they can do whatever they, I think you were proposing the senior center, right, Bob? And then, you know, they can visit your town, they can know that in 20 to 30 minutes, they can charge their car, they can get back on the highway, and they can, they can. Again, with a Level 2, it's gonna take forever, they're very, very slow. And again, we're paying very, very good rebates, as you can see on the screen, if you can still see that. You know, it depends on if you're an economic justice community, I don't think Hampton is. But based on, you know, how the community is, is, whether it's economic justice or not, um, you can get up to, you know, 100% of what it's gonna cost you.
I agree with Craig's point that electric vehicles are not necessarily green if they're using electrical power generated by a dirty coal-fired power plant somewhere in Ohio. The main argument here is to accommodate residents who will be and are buying electric vehicles. And over time, clearly, uh, I saw an article recently that the cost of, of green power is now equivalent to the cost of natural gas. And so, since the costs are the same, you're going to see a transition in the generation of power away from fossil fuels.
Right, we're adding.
We'll argue that, but, but I, I think it's clear that that's what's going to happen. And so, over time, yeah, over time, I think, the electric vehicles, uh, system, which the big three in Detroit have all said, they're not gonna manufacture gasoline-powered cars after 2035. It, it's coming. Now, I've got one, and I want you to know, I will not charge it here. I have it charged separately, and I do not need electrical power in town. So it's not about my own situation, it's about anticipating a need for the town, which I think will come rather.
Well, well, to be clear, Bob, even if you did, you'd still be paying for it like any other resident, but it's not like you'd be getting, nobody's getting it for free.
No.
So the question is, I think, we can argue the merits of it, does the town wanna spend, whatever it was, $17,000?
15, yeah.
Yeah, 15, you know, on this type of thing, and for up to, you said it was a couple of dual stations, so up to four ports, was it, or six?
It would be two stations with four ports.
Each?
Two stations with.
Two dual stations?
Yes.
Four ports, okay. And we talked before about potential locations, which we kicked around, I know you talked the senior center, we talked about the police station because of the fact it's secure there, you know?
Or Thornton Burgess, for that matter.
Well, I, I think, you know, what's, that's kind of up in the air. I think, in my mind, the police station makes a lot of, a lot of good sense there.
Yeah, it's close to.
Honestly, somebody could park it there, walk to the senior center if they wanted to, let them get that sidewalk out. So.
I don't necessarily know how many residents would use it, though. I mean, most residents who have electric cars have home chargers. You know, I don't see them driving down the street to charge their car.
No, but I.
You get the passerby, though.
I like the quick thing, though, when you said, okay, you know what, we're gonna take a trip to Boston today, oh my gosh, I can't wait for the house to finish up, let me run down to the police station and spend half an hour and get it fully charged, that type of thing?
The other thing is, on these EVs, uh, they all have these iPad-type devices, where you hit a button, it tells you where the chargers are near you. And right now, there's one Level 3 working charger in the region. There are three Level 3 chargers, two of them don't work most of the time. Uh, and now I'm sure you've seen articles that the problem with expansion of the EV car business is hobbled by the fact that these chargers are not reliable. There's one very reliable.
You're not, you're not selling the program here, Bob, just saying.
I think that, that improves as well, over time. But right now, there's one, and if I'm driving around and I came in from Pittsfield and I said, well, I'm gonna go someplace else, Worcester, well, maybe it might make sense to stop over and spend a few minutes.
It's like going on a long trip, you top off the gas tank, same thing.
What are we trying to decide here?
Right.
Uh, this is just the presentation, uh, I guess the decision, uh, if you want time to think about more, but a decision soon as to whether or not we wanna go forward and take advantage of what I think is a very generous.
When does that expire?
I don't know, when does that expire, come in?
So this, these three vehicles were approved for the 2023 year calendar year. I can't tell you what they're gonna be next year, that's not gonna prove yet.
So I guess our question is, putting that aside, would we want to ask for money? Now, keep in mind, we can ask for a warrant article, get the money, decide not to do it, and sweep the account back into general fund. Right. So we could appropriate out of free cash, X number of dollars that we.
9,000, 15,000 bucks.
Right, and then we say at the end, you know, we decided not to do it, Cliff, take it back, and that would be doable.
I do know other towns in the region are doing it, uh, Munson has two already established.
So, so there are gonna be Level 3s?
No, they have, already they have Level 2s, which I, I think are in print, but that's what the early adopters were doing.
Can every car take a different level? I don't have an electric car, I don't know, so, so whether you.
The only difference is that some take only the, only Teslas take Tesla, although that's going to change. Tesla has agreed to allow an adapter to allow non-Tesla vehicles to use their superchargers. And of the other companies, there are, I know of four, I think there are four majors, and who knows how many minor companies that are producing chargers, uh, that any of the non-Tesla vehicles can use.
So this would be, these chargers would not allow Teslas to go up to them, or?
Some, we, that's not determined. Some of the chargers, like the ones up in, it could be the one Level 3, they have, uh, two ports on one side, two ports on the other side. The two ports on one side handle everything that's not Tesla, the two ports on the other side handle Teslas. So, uh, it is possible to have a charger that provides service for Teslas and other cars.
Multi-pronged.
To be determined.
Right. Okay, so I guess this question for board, cut their chase here, is this something we're interested in pursuing with a warrant article? That's the first question, whether or not we do it.
And how much we're looking at?
Second.
15,000.
15, right?
About 15.
Yeah.
You want a motion?
I think we've heard enough to decide whether or not we wanna go forward, yeah, so. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure the hard number, up to 16,000 or whatever it is, you know? You know, it's somewhere in the 15 plus, yeah, 16 or whatever.
Okay.
Basically, do we wanna put that on, do we wanna tell Bob, put that on the special town meeting?
I'm gonna direct the non-administrator to put the question of EV charger on the town meeting, the special town meeting agenda.
You know, it's supposed to take no action, I thought, yeah, right.
I'll second, under the assumption that we're doing it for convenience.
Well, in favor of adding a warrant article for, into draft one. Thank you. Joanne, thank you so much.
You're very welcome, I apologize again for the technical difficulties.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a great night.
Good job. All right. Rolling around, I am. All right, cemetery, unless, yeah, cemetery.
Temple there, here.
Thanks. Howdy. Thanks. So we wanted to chat about, and we've got Doug here as well, CPA. Are you interested in going for some CPA money for improvements?
Uh, I spoke with Doug earlier, um, downstairs, uh, we are, but it probably wouldn't be till springtime. We don't, we know what needs to be done, it's a question of finding who does it? And what we can do outside of using CPA funds, because they're historical stones, I'm assuming that's the area you're referring to on.
Well, we were up there for the Boston Tea Party thing, and we noticed that there could be, that was at the old cemetery. Um, we noticed there were opportunities for some TLC to be done there. You're your own board, you're in charge of it. If we can help, we're not here to tell you, we're here to say, what can we do to help you? You have your perpetual care fund, you have, which a lot of you spend, I think, interest, but not the principal, right?
It's not a substantial amount of money, so we try to avoid touching it.
Yeah.
It, I made a run at this a few years ago, and it's, because they're historical markets, there's things you can do and can't do.
Okay.
And there's people who do that, and some of them are fragile, so I mean, it's not just a matter of propping them back up, we're under risk of breaking them and stuff like that. So, um, we did reach out to Wilbraham and see who they used, and they gave us a number. So we're gonna touch base with them and, you know, see what they say, and see if there's things that we can address our own, and we can cover out of our evolving. The bigger-ticket items that we might have to get a specialist to address, then, you know, we'll come to CPC in the, in spring.
I know Connie has been a source of information, but things like that, she's got a lot of contacts as well.
We, we reached out to Connie a while back on that, and, you know, so I think if we get to that point where we know that some of these have to be addressed by a specialist, we'll reach out to her again, or we'll see, um, you know, what the folks that, uh, Wilbraham provided, like, they can shed on it for us, but, uh.
Well, I think the upgrades of the town's help with the fence, finally, looks good, you know?
Yeah, we got that done, we're still trying to get a flagpole in Old Cemetery.
Didn't you have one in Old Cemetery before?
There is one now, but it's, it's broke, um, the truck at the top's broke, and it's, the flag's up. Fortunately, it's still serviceable, 'cause we can't get it down.
I gotta say, they're not, I bought that new one at the corner by Reddickers, the new fiberglass one, they're not terribly expensive.
No, we put the one in Prospect, and, um, we wanna put the same one in, in, um, Old Cemetery, it's just getting the guys to call us back and getting, you know, we use Flagman of America and having, having it available. and having, having it available.
Oh, man, I see their ads everywhere.
Yes, I mean, they're very good to work with, it's just, you know, we, we speak to them, and it's like, that's two months out, three months out, whatever.
I think, I think mine, I got that cemetery, and it was the last one they had, at that point.
It took us a while, and we're running to the time of the year where they're not gonna be able to do it, so we are gonna move it out of its current location, because that's also a scatter garden, so.
And the turnaround there?
Yeah, so we kind of want to keep people from trashing through it, or half of the tramps through it.
What about the water thing up at Prospect? A big water, empty water thing?
There was one at each cemetery, someone stole the one in Old Cemetery. We were fixing it, and the fire department was filling it for us, but people kept pulling the end off, or leaving it open, and it got just to be more of a hassle than anything, so we just stopped doing it, you know, because it's them breaking it, and then, now that it's not a volunteer fire department, it's another, you know.
You know, like, like a lot of the cemeteries have regulations and stuff about when you can fill with flowers, what kind of flowers, and that, do you, do we have those? I mean, I don't, printed ones, or?
We're, there is, there is some documents that we were giving out, but basically, it's, it's open down to dusk. We ask that people pick up, you know, after the burials, any flowers, and then clean up on their graves, that's November first, because we have landscapers coming in the fall and in the spring into cleanups, and no permanent plantings. That's it. We try to keep it simple, because it's difficult to manage. You know, we're volunteers, so we don't, we don't want to police it.
Was there like a printed thing of that, or, I mean?
We had one in the office, after, we're having some clerical issues right now, so I, I'm sure I could dig it up.
I think some of the things, you know, when we were there for the ceremony.
You're short of staff, though, is that it?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're in transition, if you will.
How are you handling if someone calls up? If I want to call up and say, I want three, and two graves, are you handling, or someone, one of the commissioners handling it?
I'm doing it. And when you leave a message, it's my phone number.
Oh, I see.
So I think, and Craig had talked about during the Boston Tea Party, what the trees?
We were up there at the back of Old Hand and Cemetery in Chapin. You know, there was a tree down, the fence was smashed, broken. Has any of that been corrected, or is that something you're looking to fix?
No, we haven't, we haven't addressed it. Part of the problem is, aren't our trees?
Well, they're, they're now in the cemetery, they're now.
So now they are, so, I mean, I haven't seen them, but I can go back up there.
Yeah, if you go in the back corner, the whole, the fence is just smashed, gone, it's like, you can walk over into the property.
And if you go further down, you can see where it's eroding from the river, along the chain link as well.
And then, the other thing I noticed was the crypt is stuck open. Is that a proposed safety factor?
I don't know, it's been open forever.
Right, well.
If you want to go in and shut the door, go ahead.
I'm not saying I don't, but I'm saying, you know, somebody could, you know, is, is that something you're concerned about?
No.
You're not?
No. It's, I, I don't, it's been open for nine years that I know.
So it doesn't, it doesn't get used, then?
No, no, it hasn't, I don't ever remember it being used.
Well, maybe we should just take the door off.
Yeah, or we could just leave it be.
Because of the scatter garden, is that the?
The turnaround, yes. Well, we're counting, we're looking for somebody to take care of the scatter garden.
Who does the maintenance now, I mean?
B and L landscaping, to cut the grass, B and L.
B and L, yes.
But they're not interested in taking care of the scatter garden, so. It's a little overgrown, we gotta find somebody to take care of it.
Are they taking care of the downed trees when they're in there, too?
No.
No.
They don't, they cut the grass, and weed it around it. So when there's trees down, then, we go out, we use, I think, tree four-one-three over in Prospect, and we had a bunch of dead trees.
I'm gonna go back to the one that we saw when we were there for the, the Tea Party ceremony, that, you know, the tree was down, and it's been down for quite some time, it's rotted, and growing into the ground now.
Okay.
You know, it's fallen over the fence, you can see where it smashed the fence when it originally came down, and it looks like it's been there for quite some time. So that's my concern, you know, is, do you have a plan to fix that, or do we need to look into CPA funding to try to get that done?
No, we can fix it, we'll go out there. I wasn't aware it was that bad, if we don't.
Again, we're only giving suggestions, we're not, because you're an elected board, you do your thing. If there are things you feel you need help from other town departments, if you want to come to us and say, can we reach out to Mark? Can we do something, whatever, we'd like to work with you if, if that's needed.
Yeah, where we're gonna get to at some point in their futures, the roads are gonna need to be addressed.
We, I know it was on Mark's list at one point.
So, you know, he did go out there, we have some washout in Prospect, so he did go out there and fix it for us, and it's held up fairly well, but.
Well, we went through that thing, you recall, through, basically, Phil Potts' house, the slope problem, four years ago, five years, roughly.
Yeah, right around there.
I think you did a good job working with Mark and controlling that water thing.
And, and the folks moved, so, that helps, too.
Taking out that other house really brought the problem to light, you know, because that was like a stopgap there. But I think, you know, all of you worked well together to take care of the problem.
Yeah, we can, you know, and I, we definitely got to the point where we can reach out to him. It's, you know, I know we're not on his radar for this year, but we can hit him up towards the end of the year for advisory time, and say, can you add at least, because it'll be a logistical thing, right, because it's not something they can do in a day.
No.
So we'll have to either do it before we open the cemetery in the spring, if the weather permits, or we'll have to close that part of the cemetery.
Yeah.
While they're in there.
If you look at what he's been doing lately, it seems like the season gets later and later, the actual paving, yeah.
So.
All right. Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down.
All right, thanks a lot.
Okay, quickly, on our agenda, we do talk about interviews. We did have some logistical things happening with the interviews. We're hoping to have the final two candidates for Pam's replacement. You know, we've been searching the world, and, but logistically, it didn't work out. So basically, I think we had four or five people submit. Bob was going to go through our first round of interviews and bring his top two choices to our meeting tonight. Because of availability for them, whichever, it didn't get done completely. We're hoping to complete it tomorrow. I would ask the board if they would consider keeping the meeting open, recusing, I guess, recessing the meeting would be the proper term, until tomorrow evening at six, for the purpose of interviewing Bob's top two choices.
I could say that of the four that we were going to interview, two have not communicated. I have to wonder, if one of them is interested. I don't know about the other, from the eastern area.
So do you think you'll be able to put that to bed tomorrow, we can fix this tomorrow night?
If we, if we're not able to bring the other two applicants in, who seem to have some credentials, I will bring in the two that I interviewed today, who I thought were capable people.
Okay. I did ask Bob about the, basically, the posting thing that would be, he said, well, we're not posting a new meeting.
No.
We're recessing a current meeting that is, these are agenda items on that meeting.
Agenda items, yes.
Say we had gone till eleven o'clock at night with the other agenda item, we would just recess and continue the next day, so it's no different. Is the board interested in that, to give Bob the full chance to vet the other candidates?
I would just like to say, we wouldn't be here till eleven o'clock. But it's okay. It's okay to go tomorrow night.
I will just tell you, when I first started on the board.
We have, I know.
No, no, with Jim and Dwayne, and we did go, we started at seven, but we did go to eleven. And Doug may remember that those days.
There was meetings when I was on the school committee, my wife thought I left her.
Yeah.
Don, I can't race to adjourn tonight?
We got these, we got these receipts here that are hanging around.
So are you okay with that?
Yeah, four o'clock this afternoon.
Okay. So, that being said, can we invite the advisory committee, such as they are up to our town?
They were gonna meet tomorrow, six o'clock.
Yes.
Depending he gets.
I mean, you want a different time?
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
I mean, I have no problem at five thirty. All right, we're gonna recess to potentially six o'clock, unless we hear from the town minister, that the people are available at X time. So, hello, Doug?
Hello.
This doesn't seem right.
No, it doesn't.
Hi, Carol. It's not right, I'm just, oh, gosh. All right, so we asked you in for a couple of things. We have the draft copy of the warrant.
He has a copy.
You have a copy, great.
Yeah, we just quickly reviewed it tonight.
Okay. I don't think there's anything, that's a surprise on here, that you may not have heard about before. We just had the question, because I hear it in the school committee meeting, of additional articles they were looking at.
Put the master plan on, because I, I think we need to make, I need to have a decision as to whether or not to go forward with that.
Yeah, I think we're voting on that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's next Wednesday, I think.
The, the one item that we did have a question about was, well, I guess it was Article Seven and Article Nine, the land trust. The, am I not the only one that has the question, then?
No, you're not.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Because the, we, we did an article in the, in the spring to reimburse the land trust for the, finishing up the work at South Road Trailhead.
Right.
So is this additional funding?
Like it is, yes. What are they looking to do?
No, 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 this is the second article for the walnut. We, remember, it takes two articles? All we did was the first one, we didn't do the second, this is the walnut.
Well, you're talking about the acquisition of the property, that's the other thing that I want, but that's not, that's not on here.
Is that nine?
Article Seven?
Article Nine says reimbursement of the land trust.
There's actually two articles.
Yeah, but this is supposed to purchase, this is supposed to be the second part of the walnut.
Right, we, we need the, we need the article that will authorize the town to acquire the property.
Because that looks like.
Right.
Right.
It's, the, the thought is right, it's the walnut thing, I don't think you have the language correct, but it's the walnut property.
Because we, you know, as a result of an oversight in the spring, we authorized the money, but not the actual purchase.
Yep.
So now this is step two of that, that acquisition.
Is that nine?
What's seven?
That's seven and nine.
Seven.
That was his question.
That's why, that's our confusion, we weren't quite sure.
Did we take out, I have two Article Nines here. So nine, the first nine is the government study. The second nine is reimbursement for management.
That's another issue, yeah.
So are we referring to this as Article Ten now, and then subsequent ones?
And the reimbursement.
Well, if nine stays, if seven stays, exactly, it'll adjust itself. All right. Anyway, it just, that just needs to be clarified. I, I'm not sure the land trust needs additional reimbursement. I, I had spoken to a woman from the land trust, Jennifer, and she had asked me about processing the request for reimbursement, having to do with the stump grinding and the brush clearing, that had been approved in the, in the spring.
Yeah, I thought we had more articles than that, this is actually on our preliminary list.
That's been processed.
All right, so we don't need a reimbursement article for the land trust.
Okay. Are you thinking of having, well, we, we did, we had kind of an informal request from the police chief for money for rifles.
Right.
Well, until it gets formal, let's.
I know, just to give you a heads up, just to give you a heads up. Okay, and I don't know how many they need, but they run about a thousand dollars apiece.
It goes like, ten?
Ten rifles?
The roof, that's where they just call the old ones there.
I'm surprised we have ten rifles.
Maybe it was eight or ten.
One for every cruiser.
Really?
Yes.
Well, don't say that, we don't have ten cruisers.
Yeah, wow. It's, well, let's, let's wait and see.
All right, but either way, that issue surfaces, then we'll deal with it. Give us an update on where we stand with the school articles, as far as you understand.
We, well, what I have is, I think what you have, is you have the email from, originated with Aaron at the school district, came through, I believe through Bob and through Nick and Wilbraham. And the school district, if we go back to the spring, they originally had sent the assessment letter to us, and included the capital items.
Right.
At our request, our being both Wilbraham and Handen, school committee voted to take the capital items off, and we agreed that we would take them up in, in the fall. Since then, they have reordered those capital items, and the email which we received, they, Aaron broke it out into priorities, priority one, priority two. Priority one is, is a heat exchanger and one of the boilers in the high school, and some mini splits. Then priority two was classroom projectors and monitors and camera system updates.
Neither, excuse me, Doug, but neither which were on the original spring.
This is a moving, this is an evolving list, correct?
So camera systems and projectors are not part of their IT budget?
Well, you, you, there's, there's a debate probably to be had at the school committee level as to whether or not these are, in fact, capital items.
Right.
As opposed to regular operating expenses.
Now, not to play devil's advocate, if they're proposing these, don't we have to take them no matter what? I thought part of the regional thing is, if they propose a warrant article, it goes on.
If the school, if the school committee votes a request, whether it be operating or capital, and it goes to the towns, the towns have to take it up.
Obligated to take action.
Exactly.
Might be no, might be yes, right.
Right.
Now the question's gonna be, are they doing four separate ones, two lumps?
I mean, I, I think I can safely say that advisory is keen to be working with the school district, as opposed to working at cross purposes. I understand Wilbraham is having these same discussions, so that we're all trying to be pulling in the same direction. The, the issue of how many articles this should be has come up. We, we discussed it, we, we thought that it made sense to have priority one as Article One, priority two as Article Two. And they, the school district themselves have broken them into priorities, but we don't feel real strongly about it. I mean, if, if, if the board, you know, feels differently, or if Wilbraham, you know, insists on a different arrangement, then, you know, we, we're not sticking to our guns on this issue, it's not that important.
It's not a hill you want to die on.
Exactly, but it is important, we think, that these items be brought to the voters, who are, who are paying the bill, and have the opportunity to voice their opinions and to raise their hand, you know, for or against it.
Well, typically, while we did make the promise to bring them forward, although these are now different things, that's one thing. I, I can see, I can agree that the boiler thing constitutes an emergency, and it should be taken up at the fall town meeting. Having gone through a complete boiler rebuild at my office, and having let it go a year, it cost me more to do it instead of treating it right away. I personally would like to address them the same way as Wilbraham, I could see that being correct by a funding thing. What if we voted, say we did four, we voted one, yes, and two, no, and Wilbraham votes as a group of two and votes the whole thing, it screws the whole funding up. You know, so we should be.
So, so if we do four articles and they do four articles, they each, each stands or falls.
Live and die on their own, right, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, as I say, we.
Then they don't get the money. But at least we're treating them all, you know, a, a.
And the, and the school district has the opportunity to come in and make their case on each one of the articles.
Right, right.
I mean, you know, the, the other side of this is that we don't want to get into micromanaging. I mean, the school district is a, you know, a $50 million operation.
I wish, sixty, no.
Yeah. So, you know, and I think that goes to Craig's question about, you know, things like mini splits and projectors, you know, are these in fact capital items? And I think that's a discussion that the school committee should be having. We have to take what they send to us. I mean, if they vote an item and send it to us as an assessment, we have to take it up.
Okay. So would the, how do we want to handle this then? You're obviously in communication with finance committee.
Yes.
And we're anticipating, well, again, we would get warrant articles submitted from the school committee. I would anticipate that school committee, the finance committee, and you would work out the best way to present them to the two towns. We will get the official letter from John, Michelle, whichever, to Bob asking for these to be on the warrant. We actually have not set a date for closing the warrant, which should actually come up tonight. Actually, for next week, we should set a date to close the warrant. So when, I'm not sure when the next school committee meeting is.
I'm proposing here, I, just for the sake of discussion, I proposed October 10th.
To close the warrant?
Yeah.
Seems a little late, okay.
Well, town meeting is not until the 30th.
Yeah, but you wanted your meeting the following week or so, right?
We, we tentatively set our public hearing for October 23rd, which is a week before.
Yeah, I mean, we're closing for the purpose of no new articles. I mean, end of September gives us time, really. Now we got a month to tune it up and make it right, like these land trust things. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be right. So are we saying then we're, we thank you for the heads up, and anticipate to get more information from a combination of finance advisory and school?
If I understand correctly, I think whether it's coming from Wilbraham or whether it's